Today is December. And there is a proposed budget and budget planning meeting on holding a only two meetings a month for regular business. Since May is our second meeting, we had meeting last week where we covered several market fashion plans for the coverage of Boston job nation. And today they're competing again to listen to more get our action events. And today we have all members of the budget finance committee here so this meeting is already planned. Mr. Bobby, could you take that?
I'm chairman of the budget finance committee. This is roll call for the budget finance committee's twenty nineth Newcastle special meeting for December two thousand twenty five. Roll call, Ambrose and me parish. Ambrose and me parish is president. Ambrose Hall, our slider.
Present.
Ambrose Hall, our slider is present. Ambrose Norman indicate. Ambrose Norman indicate is president. Ambrose Everkiss is the proud.
I'm present.
Ambrose Everkiss is proud is present. Ambrose Carol and Yasi.
Here.
Ambrose Carol and Yasi is present. Ambrose Lester C. Osi.
He is in.
Ambrose Lester C. Osi is present. The manager, yeah, six members present. Let's talk to the crime for the special meeting.
As you had made here, Mr. Tommy, there's an official roll call of the lights in Malaysia based on the main site. So if you're still in place, you can do anything. Yeah. Okay, I'm just wondering also, Mr. Tommy, if you could identify Stephen Curly and ask, is she your chapter still? Then we can be here again. And then also if Chair Gervin has some on the way. I think it's been a few days since you passed your case in. And on the door. You're my ever president. All right, welcome everyone. Let's begin our meeting. Doug, let's see how he. And he doesn't make any decisions.
Yeah, I'm the chairman and chair. I'm the chief of the board. In the past, I've been delivered by the best movie. Uh, there's a, you know, I, I'm the vice chair, I guess. The, uh, who was I? So. I've got a little machine in place, but she was I was in the five which still present. But I'm a idiot. Because you know, you believe some of them, you know, you believe in my answer, it's my job. When I say the road shop is near the best. It also know the tour. But I'm sorry. It don't cease hard.
Fast period. We actually. They started. Or on the. So she makes.
Thank you, Kelly, that's three thousand for giving us today an implication or any. Members and many of us. Our. For the events. Thing for our vice chairs. This is obviously we have the president as the.
The manager, we have the last can all read this on the top.
Alright, welcome, Mr. is. You do have the honorary general here, Mr. Jones, we have the controller of the navigation here. We also have. What's coming in from legal now, oh, Mr. Samuel, love them. Bring in. Samuel all right, all guys, we sold. Alright, is it over the other?
We have adding as well, so manage a budget.
Alright, good morning, good morning, good morning, on the call legislative services, we have Mr. Taki and Mr. Mo, so. Alright, next, we do have this. To be in place speaker thoroughly. We have anyone, oh, in fact, I don't know as well. Uh, do we have anyone from office and president and vice president here? Anyone on the call? No one?
Yeah.
They have things that are from the judicial branch. That went on the off of the judicial branch, I have to go in here. Right, let's move on, we are reviewing and.
I'm chairman of the budget finance committee, the proposal done the reasons follows, but the finance committee is twenty six thousand eight to council special meeting in December next two thousand twenty five A M. Provide almost a new parish chairperson, I'm will call our state or vice chairperson location budget finance committee conference from Winderock, Arizona. One coming to order roll call invitation to recognize guests and visiting official through review and adopt the agenda for you and adopt the kernel. December second, two thousand twenty five regular meeting, five receiving reports, none, six focuses, none, seven news business. A legislation number zero two two six dash two five, an actual relating to resource development and budget finance committees accepting internal audit of the safety. He hung which chapter from the office of the auditor general approving the corrective action plan of for this. Hollywood chapter. B legislation number zero two four two dash two five, an actual relating to resource development and budget finance community accepting the performance audit of natural arts and craft enterprise name. From the office of the auditor general approving the correct action plan of days. Six legislation number zero two five one dash two five, an actual laying to resource and development and budget finance can be approving of. Project change approved in resolution C A P dash thirty five dash eighteen exhibit B of global world chapter. E legislation number zero two six four dash two five, an excellent to the budget finance. Not the committing the navigation council approving a budget revision request. From the office of other the president, vice president, waiting the budget structure manual provision of vibrant revisions of personnel accounts into non-personal accounts. Waiting C J Y dash sixty six that twenty three sections three eight and three E one and two. Eight, the closer to you and that's what's under German, Madam Chairman, the budget finance committee that the proposal ran into the record. She's very committed, she's in her work session right now, so I'm texting her on the agenda.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Tommy, Mr. Tommy, give our recommendations.
And Madam Chairman, the budget finance committees, if you're aware, I texted to me last night, that legislation number zero two five. Nine has been a request to be added to the agenda, this is illegal with the department's and their educations. Um, legislation for. B as their budget is also. Being impacted by operations as they need to be paid. The manager, that is the only recommendation is we lost the for the committee to consider. The committee report was sent to this morning with all the changes to it. The legislation program were waiting for the committee report to be predicated. It's all the C R.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Tommy, or so the budget and finance committee, you've heard Mr. Tommy's recommendations for the agendas today. Before we get to those, any amendments to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Is there a motion for the proposed agenda? Oh, the most you ask is the motion that. Certainly, my lady, or vice chair, maybe go back to my chair, say, for his.
Thank you, I would. Um, Chair, I would like to amend the order of the agenda and have. Say, remain the same and then put the. Zero two four two twenty five as the last item. And then bump up two five lines twenty five and go after two two six twenty five. And then I would also like to add to the doing of the session. I would like to add the joining legislation before then we swim.
I made you a share.
Okay, so the order would be two two six twenty five, two five one twenty five. Or two. What is the next one? Two five nine twenty five and two six four twenty five. Oh, sorry. What did I say? I'll say it again, two two six twenty five, two five one. Two six four. Is it two five nine, that's still doing one, two five nine and then two forty two.
So. Speaker. Your vice chair Simonson. Chair Tommy. Tony. And then last of them. Oh, yeah, that is charity cases. Alright, thank you, Vice Chair Stater, alright, one more tonight. I'm not going to give the legislation numbers, but these are the subjects of those legislation. The first legislation will be the correct action plan for sale and I cottonwood chapter. The second legislation will consider in this amendment, uh, is approved is the project change. For. Chapter. The third legislation will be a budget revision request legislation. And the fourth legislation will be the thirty unmet needs supplemental request. And the last legislation will be the title of pricing fast enterprise. Alright, members of the budget and finance committee, this is second to. Okay, that is why. Okay. Okay, I got the agent warning, uh, all of this, thank you for being here. So, um, Chair Parish. Uh, my question of my lunch, as my chair of the undershirt is. If we could request from staff, uh, the notes from the oversight discussion regarding this budget is my understanding. But there, there may, uh, need to be some modifications. And in the committee reports, it doesn't necessarily. Uh, mention like what were some of the challenges that could be to this legislation, so gives us enough time. Um, to give that information. And. Want to, I don't know if there was any official amendments. And the last area, because it's just basically, you know, it's a budget request. And, uh, I did ask the controller yesterday that he reviewed, uh, or do he met with him to review. Uh, their budget forms. And so if I took as control in the key. Okay, if we could just, um, verify that 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 conversation happened. Because if it didn't happen, that's going to delay the discussion here of when getting financed. That's why I was heading to the to second. Uh, the motion, so I would need to know, uh, that information when we withdraw my, um. My motion for the. Yeah, Chairman, I remember that's what I mean, yesterday, uh, myself and Mr. Tommy met with the controller. And we were meeting with the controller on all of the discussions we had last budget and finding committee meeting. The outstanding new issues that we need to be done to recruiting this timeline for that. Uh, among that, amongst that conversation, we did, um. I did ask the controller if he met with the department of net education. And as, as of yesterday, we had a month. I don't know after then, he had been with the person, but, uh, maybe if I can ask who's edge water, she could provide, uh, there's plenty of people to see whether they met. There's water, I don't know, the office of the committee will, it's really. Morning, um. Members, um, you'll look that up. To Chairman Inverseness, but I think that she has questions that are going to be, that is not she in party and all of that to the chair that she said. Okay, so I'm in order as the second, when she needs a party, I need to ask, do you have, if we could modify. Your amendment right now until we get that information that, um. We move from after legislation zero six four dash twenty five. That's the budget revision, if we can, uh, then hear legislation zero two four two dash twenty five. And not consider don't be in this amendment until we have that information in, uh, the program can entity time. To work with the controller and if that information is available, then, uh, we could suspend the forums and add it on to the agenda. Uh, thank you, I just don't want to take action, um, without clearly understanding, uh, the intent. And, um, there shouldn't be, uh, uh. I don't think nobody should try to, um, go around our data during the decision meeting. And not, I don't understand why they're not meeting the office of the controller. But they can discuss that if they're ready to prevent the committee before we get to it. Yeah, they can draw everything as a party, like you have to raise shares, how it is looking.
Um, I'll present that and then. I risk. You have, uh, four or five legislations and please do for your solo interview.
Uh, thank you, meeting members, yes, um, we do have a letter that was verified by during as committee members, but I will take the time now to meet with the controller. Be able to, uh, address the issues in the movements that have been made, thank you, I will get that back to you before you make, uh, continue.
I'll be good to me as a sponsor too.
Thank you. Well, I did from my. Are you a lot of me? Uh, I didn't bring my book, but I just wanted to double check and, you know, we read through, you know, all of it and make sure all the pieces were there. But in terms of and. In, in the big booklet, um, I know that you asked for two documents, one thing O and B and one thing O C. Um, but I just, uh, I'm not sure, and you've been book hook. Booklet also says you absolutely have to meet with the controller, um. And, and have these discussions, but I'm just thinking like the letter from O O C, but because we got controller on the line. When we were in our committee meeting and we were making amendments, we got him on the line, we got him to send us a letter. So we, uh, felt like that was sufficient, so, um, uh, you know, we need to further meet with him. I mean.
Thank you, Vice Chair. You have to have any of that. Simonson, I think what your, uh, delegate, Jimmy Simonson is referring to is that. You pay supplementing the budget is need for custom, I think you, every single. Request has to be run through the office of the controller, however, if a committee is requesting is not that. The committee is requesting that. In order for that legislation to be put on the agenda today, it still needs to be run through the pivot table that was created for the F point twenty five budget. And so the letter doesn't do that. But that's what the committee is asking, or at least Chair Clive is asking, i- is that if the interview discussion regarding the pivot table regarding the. Excel sheet that was created for that. Not to now through.
So does it, uh, can you show me in the band? Where it meets that.
Does not say that in the budget restriction right, but in order for it, because it's not for any of the agenda, that's the question we can do every time to clarify first.
Subban power, um, programs and departments notify of this requirement.
And when all the comprehensive budget needs to be, it was run through the matrix.
Okay, yeah, it just will be helpful if you have that in writing, so we can, it can be clear. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, I think we have had the same conversation. Correct version, maybe. When you would consider information. Thank you. Members of the committee, we do have an amendment on the floor for several items, we agree on our agenda. Uh, Chair, does anybody view, uh, means a new second? Yeah, put that one.
Oh, actually.
Go ahead.
Uh, Chair, I'd like to modify my intention to have the nice legislation, which is two four two twenty five, we first. Just to help out chairs.
So, okay, so. Speaker, Chairman Suze.
Yeah.
Speaking for his shoes back to for me, back to the vice chair Simonson and then to Chair.
Yeah, so. No good, you know.
I'm trying to, trying to find the silver light. Okay, thank you, members of today, uh, for the reference, everything without your motion. My share is getting her dog's motion. Thank you. Um, she are ready today, that was a great discussion on our agenda, now we are, we have no minutes, go for them. Here, let's go to a final vote on our agenda. Um. Delegate, I'm going to engage you on screen, uh, delegate. General, I think you'll screen, also, my share, I'm in the past. Chair, I'm in the past, for Friday, you will screen, Kelly, I'll share as you. So, I'll see you as we can see and actually.
Great.
By stream, prostate, those three, and for when you speak for five, no resorting to the. Zero post default not voting, emotional carries. Next, around, again, exactly, during December second. The December second, there was a tax to the calendar, right? There were the committee, but in the last motion to adopt the German. What, what should I do? You're second. Okay. Then I, Vice Chair, Paul Sager. Okay, members of the committee, any questions on the German? There's none, so we're all over. Delegate, delegate, the other Sharon, happy, any vote? Bring the Sharon, happy, but straight, Sharon, everybody, but. Sharon, everybody, go screen. And tell it, I was here, I was here.
And Charlie.
So, you're asking, most great, and Vice Chair, process, or any book?
Great.
Vice Chair, process, and most great, we have five members voting, and I have seven voting. We must share, members of the committee, we have no reports today, that will be this time, our new business. But at this time, we will welcome us either personally and clearly. And the office has been the auditor general. As we love, as the first one, I'm British. This is why can we get that settled to the record? It is, let us know that's been all tried to do it.
Chairman, the legislative committee to have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero. Two two six dash two five, date September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. Part of the resolution, actual link to the reverse development of the financials, except the internal audit and the pending found which chapter for the office, the audit. The proposed correction action plan for this money found with chapter. The purpose of this resolution is to set the internal audit of the same found which chapters in office, the audit journal, and to put the proposed corrective action. But the finance committee has found authority of this legislation, it runs into the record into the entirety. Per nomination council rules of order, rule nine legislation has been written to the record by electronic voice recording.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Chairman, the finance committee, is there a motion to consider legislation, use six five? Well, the chairman, you're seven. Second is by the chairman, now the. Members of the budget and finance committee, we have legislation two two six two five, just stated personally, clearly. The auditor general, so we can afford to see the.
That's eight, good morning, to the committee members, Chairman. Vice Chairman, we want the chairman, Tom and Tommy. Also, delegate, 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 Shana. Good morning. This is morning, having bring forth legislation zero two two six dash two five. It is accepting the approval of the corrective action plan of someone of not, not a chapter. This chapter, they now sort of like chapters. And with the help of the auditor general, the old Shana, Mr. Wallace. And also have to meeting the chapter manager, Chuck Wallace. And also our chapter vice president, there Nelson Charlie. Uh, the links I gave before over back to you, and then we are more than likely to explain our.
Thank you, Speaker, really. That's certainly from the auditor general. And then if the chapter would like to, or as a song, if we like, the chapter is, the song. But if. You will get some of that, I mean, justice. Looking for members.
Thank you. This audit report is, audit report number two three zero two, conducted for somebody. Part of the chapter, the audit covers twelve months period ending March thirty first, two thousand twenty two. And it was performed to assess chap, the chapter's compliance, compliance with capital. Policies, procedures, and financial management processes. The objective was to evaluate internal audit control. Identify areas of risk and recommend improvement to strengthen accountability and operational efficiencies. During the course of that, three findings were identified. Chap, first finding is chapter assets value, the quality of the non-cheat are not inaccurate and. Assets are not depreciated. So the balance sheet, what's reported on the balance sheet, been not reconciled to the property inventory list. The depreciation, depreciation value were not updated. Finding two, the chapter's property inventory is incomplete. There were missing informations such as a fireplace, package of verse and location. Finding three, cash receipt. For very various purposes was reported in an inappropriate revenue code. Several, several were used as unidentified revenue. Which is not a code you want to use, you want to avoid unidentified and this is a, so it has to be put in a different. Coding with a different account codes. And in conclusion, if this chapter wants to pursue certification, they have to focus these, on these areas. Because very, to be in compliance. They have to. They have to account for all of the capital assets and everything has to be coded correctly. Thank you.
Okay. Auditor General, and all the next, our chapter manager.
Good morning. It's kind of not for inviting us here. Chair, Sharon, we want to share my issues, I'm sure, can I see the, that's just true. There's she, there's she, go to the she, there's she, no. I've been working with the chapter for the last eight years and to explain these three findings. The first one was the assets, the capital assets and everything else. When I came on board with the chapter, there was building listing that was different from national property, risk management and chapter. So what we had to do and what was recommended for us was to get that place, the buildings that we were actually using. And so we did that. We, I went ahead and did a one six support and hired an individual from Farmington. He came in July sixth, twenty twenty three, and completed his report July fourteenth, twenty twenty three. And so now our fixed asset is currently done now. After that, we were recommended to purchase a fixed asset so that it could depreciate a module. So we purchased that nine fifteen, twenty twenty three for a thousand one hundred ninety four dollars. Most of the chapters are using NIP. So those computers, we needed to buy the fixed asset module from ITG in Mexico. So that's where we purchased this. And it was. Set, set up in our computer. So now all of our buildings and our apartments and anything valued over five hundred dollars is officiating automatically. So that's all set up now. And the next one that we were charged with was the. GL code. Um. Okay. Where's the property, property listed? You know, we have our summer students and you know, if we have a summer student. And or any, any students. They, they pick on things until they kill off the, you know, they're clearing off the labels on our inventory. So that's the only, that's the only way that I can explain that. And but we do catch shows when we do our inventory and we relabel them. So most of the stuff that, that was finding was like chairs and stuff like that. And it wasn't everything. And then tools and stuff like that, you know, they're not really labeled. Because they constantly use them and they do come on. Those hand tools and stuff like that. So we have fixed those and we've counted everything else. It's just that we had to change some of the inventory numbers on it. So and that's a fix too. So we watch those a lot closer now. Um, everything was there, it's just that they, we didn't have all the labels on them. The last one is the. GL code is what they call it, codes that we use on the NIP. And some of these codes, a lot of codes is already preset. But then. Like for our chapter there, we have a Coca-Cola machine there in the chapter house. And every quarter, the Coca-Cola company will send us a check. For having that Coke machine there in the chapter house. So that is really not labeled inside the GL codes. So there is really no code for that. Um, so what we've been doing was labeling as unidentified revenue or missing industry revenue. And when we got our audit done, they recommended that we don't use those by law. To try and find another code. And that's where the chimney ASC office is going to alert the best and try and create another code. But if they do, they will have to go across the number one hundred and ten chapters. Excuse me. And. But they, that part of it never got done. So now we do identify that item as some like a donation. From the Coca-Cola company. So they're basically labeled now correctly. So that part of it has to fix also. So those are the three items that we were charged with. That we got our audit. But like I said, everything has been fixed. Instead of officiating correctly, we're doing our inventory and double checking our latest medical at that. I hear a list of item numbers, you know, the tag numbers and a description to the chapter officials randomly. And they go around doing spot checks. And that's what they do and they bring them back to me. And we, I keep them on file too. So that's what they've been doing to do spot checks. That's how I've been having the chapter, which is pitching their time to do spot checks of us. So.
Thank you.
I mean, with your chapter manager, oh, we don't, they will. Vice President, we wish you the best of all.
Fair enough. Although it's on the carrier, I do. It's not so much angry. I feel sorry. I don't know, I think it's all, it's a lot of, it's a lot of. I don't know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of angry, but the. Can you hear it, I think, I think it's all about. That now is never going to, now, I know. I think I got, which end the heart, which, the head there, and that is fair, I mean, yeah. I shall, I have to know. For any. Then I'll learn the path, I mean, maybe by then, then I need to see that. He, 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 he has an. I could, he, 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 he. I should, he, 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 yeah. Don't, he, 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 he. I have a connect, he, 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 he. I thought, he, 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 he. He, 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 he. I should, I should. But I know, he, he. I said, I don't, he, 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 he. As angry, he, 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 he. I could, he, 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 he. I have, he, he, he. I said, and so, I'm just kidding, all of it. I thought I had things to announce, so we have to, and that's all she didn't say. He don't understand that, no. I'll be holding you. I don't know, I should be, yeah, I tell. I should know, I'm glad. I thought I had it, I did. I should have, I should have. It's always just not seem naked. Then kiss them, or you get a photo, and then I'll say hey, not to. Then kiss him, I thought it's all good, I don't know, it's all good, I should be, yeah, I be. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. But that, that, oh, she say, I show it. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, I can't, I can't, I can't. Need to know, I need, then I can't, I can't, I don't know. I can't. I, I taste it, not that. I guess I'm more. Thank you, my community, than myself. I could be. She might not see that, she's not to be, eh. Do you see that, nothing, sure, eh, eh, that's all. Now, I should say, it's a cheat. I should put it cheap, I should cheat. Yeah, I need to cheat. Top bang, eh, yeah, I should know. I should hear, I got that, she may never hear me, now, I don't know, I don't know, I'm stuck at, it's not there, I'm not. I could hear that, I can't, I don't, I hate, I should.
Thank you, committee, and chairwoman, that does complete our presentation today.
Thank you, speaker, fairly, and also to our leadership at Zelena, the founder of chapter. Uh, and also to our auditor general, members of the budget finance committee, we have motion and second on the session two six six two five. I'm doing, you have any questions? Vice Chair, pause there.
Uh, any questions, but of all audits that I've seen here on B S C, I think this is the newest one, the findings are very ones, so congratulations. And uh, so was Rasples to stop picking up or? Those stickers with the, or things on.
Yeah, I think you guys, Chairman Cosby, if you go to the budget, they explain. Alright, members of the committee, are you want to read it up?
Three.
Right, here's the, my shirt probably goes green. Uh, normally, he gave us three. Ocean, having, ocean, has he got screen? They're on the air, because of that.
If I could just say, uh, Dr. A, here's, uh, he on this level, I think people must just keep. Uh, best team, I should keep, the highest people, the shame of it. So, um, American is not proud, even to share. Full house, so I get, um, shots, I come to the shoot springs. So appreciate you, um, they were great, thank you.
Yeah, I think you should, and sure, and we're past the fight. We have had a great vote, and uh, last year, yeah.
Done, sure, I'm voting.
Like I said, I was screaming, I'm five hundred twenty, I'm currently, I'm close, I'm not voting, well, she cares, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, we're on the budget, it's right, it is probably the, the. I don't know, we set a record for everything that's.
I feel like we both have a mind. If we can happen, we can happen, we believe in your chapter, we believe in this.
We have, uh, Sherman Brennan, it's been legislation. Okay, sure, it's one, uh, very good, yes, please. I believe, uh, really, right, we. Right, so clearly, these days, and how I should ask. Well, you asked, uh, is that anything, is your honor? Okay, we, 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 we can face this here, and then we go very big, this morning, we take the name. And we are, which is about it, I am, did you mean? Very, you haven't had an agent ready for, or then?
Uh, this is good, yes.
Okay, uh, this, I, you know, that, um.
Members of the committee have legislation, we're tracking number zero two four two thousand two five. Date October seventeen, two thousand twenty five, titled the resolution, actually, to resource and development by the committee, accepting the proposal. I have an annual arts and craft enterprise, Nace, from the office of the auditor general, approving the proposed corrective action plan of Nace. The purpose of this resolution is to set the performance out of the Navajo Arts and Craft Enterprise. From the office of the auditor general, and propose corrective action. But the finance committee has found the authority of this legislation to be right to the record and to tag. For now, we see council rules of order, rule nine legislation, and then ready to record by electronic goes reporting.
You must be talking, who you is, how to the record, and who's the candidates or motions to consider legislation zero two four two five. Looking by, by Chairman, very second. Second, by General, last year, I think. Members of the committee, we will now give the sign over to Chairman and Friday Jesus. And, uh, let her begin her presentation.
Again, thank you, Chair Harris, and also one of the members of Budget and Finance Committee. And also to the staff, and then our visitors that are here, and also to. Office of the Auditor General, and also my agents from, um, Navajo, um, Arts and Craft Enterprise. So with that, uh, colleagues, I bring legislation. Zero two, or four, two, four, two dash two five, before you hear today. Again, this is, um, Navajo Arts and Craft Enterprise. Audit that has, um, uh, was, um. Perform, or performance audit that was conducted by Office of the Auditor General at the request of Resources and Development Committee. And, um, an extensive, uh, overview was given to. The Resources and Development Committee with an outside, um, auditing firm who might be on the call here, um, today. To answer any questions, um, parallel with, um, Office of the Auditor General here with the Navajo Nation. And there was, um. Some findings in, um, different aspects of functional areas of operation with, um. Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprise, which was, um, reviewed by the committee members in the areas of the council table. We got the finance department, and also the purchases, uh, purchasing department and store operations. And also the marketing and sales. And, um, with that, I understand that, um. Uh, Chief Executive Officer, Mr. J T Willie. Who is at another very important meeting today. Um, had outlined a corrective action plan that was, uh, shared with the committee. And in the committee report, there were three areas that, um, Resources and Development Committee had requested of. Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprise, which is to, uh, update the plan of operating to be ended. So that the board members' terms, uh, should be brought down to four years. Um, as we've learned that the board members' terms have been eight years, and I think majority of the board members. Um, terms have expired. And then the second area of concern, or, uh. Consideration that is asked for two days was. To have the chief executive officer advise the Resources and Development Committee, we're going to update the board on a corrective action plan. Within six months from now, so again, we will continue that. Uh, dialogue with the enterprise in hopes that they fulfill the corrective action plan. And the other area that was recommended for Navajo Nation Arts and Crafts to. Hire an accountant that poses, you know, the accounting background. The purpose of this was, um, we did, it was shared with the committee that there was, um, an employee in there. Um, and really not abiding by any of the current accounting principles and the reporting process with internal revenue service, so. Which does, you know, implicate a concern. When it comes to the overall financial, um. Snapshot for Navajo Nation Arts and Crafts, so that was a request by, uh, Resources and Development Committee. So, uh, Madam Chair, at this time, what I would like to do is yield time over to Office of the Auditor General to give a. General overview of the, um, audit that had taken place, um, by the office, and also yield some time over to. The staff, um. From Navajo Nation Arts and Crafts, to give a, um, really quick overview to Madam Chair.
Okay, the, the, the committee, Chair and members. I am free to leave, senior auditor general. The audit report, um, is pretty extensive, audit report number twenty five two two. It was performed by TAP International Incorporated, we shared their audit services to conduct this performance audit. Uh, currently, um, TAP, uh, the auditors that formed the audit are. Out of the country, but I'm not sure if they will, they will be online or not to answer any questions. Uh, it will be, um, uh, the owner, uh, her name is Denise Kelly, and I'm not sure if she'll be on the meeting for me. Uh, what I will do this morning, I did send some, um, key, key, um, points that I will be making. Um, to Mr. Potty this morning, since the audit report is pretty extensive. I just wanted to highlight different areas in the report for your consideration. First of all, uh, we issued a number one on October seven, twenty twenty five. And issued audit report number twenty five twenty three regarding Navajo Arts and Craft Enterprises. In conjunction with TAP International Incorporated, it was determined the efficiency and effectiveness of Nace. In utilizing current sources, managing operations, administrating key services. Fulfilling stated objectives and examining basis and showing control systems. And processes to identify opportunities for improvement. Audit period covered July twenty first through June twenty twenty four, but this will have analysis. July twenty twenty four to June thirty, twenty twenty five. There were three main findings. Finding one, Nace's transfer through mixed fiscal to date, which has remained for one year, period of our review. Down here, twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four. Finding two, key business activities and tools need redevelopment or adjustment. Finding re-improvement opportunities identified amongst the by the partners. For the three findings, the auditor has offered eight recommendations to serve as a roadmap, and it's for the operation. And culture of Nace. The recommendations are designed to include internal control and performance, very. So, in regards to the audit report, I will first start, um. Uh, referring you to these specific pages, there's. So, um, in finding one, which starts on page eleven. And maybe, uh, we'll be going through the tables presented in the audit, but I mean. Um, there is the, uh, key results, finding one, page eleven. Basically, this report, uh, this table states that sales are defined. Nace is making, um, only about half the money it used to. This affects bills, stores, staff, and inventory. Uh, one key area there that was noted is sales has decreased from twenty twenty one. Of ten point five million to six point zero million. And if you will notice that a full change in net position has, uh. Moved from a positive number of one point seven million in twenty twenty one. To a negative number of two point three million, which is estimated to be in twenty twenty four. At the time of the completion of this audit, the twenty twenty four financial statement had not been audited yet, or entered provided to, um. The auditing firm tapping. The next table on page twelve. Spending did not decrease when sales fell. On page twelve, the expense table shows that spending stayed high, even though sales went down. A key point from this table. Payroll remain high. Consultants continued to be paid. Marketing was paid for without checking results. Bonuses continued to be issued. In other words, sales went down, spending did not go down a bit. This is a major reason why Nace is losing money. Further, uh, in regard to the C E O, but C E O bonus issue. That is covered on page twelve and page twenty nine. These pages together show a forty thousand dollar bonus for twenty twenty three. A fifty thousand dollar bonus for twenty twenty four. And, uh, a total of a hundred eighteen thousand bonus for twenty twenty five, told them in. A bonus total of two hundred and eight thousand within the audit third day. In other words, the C E O was paid by the contractor instead of an employee. Taxes were not withheld correctly, that would be specifically on page twenty nine. So, when we go to the next, uh, table on page fifteen. This is in regards to the different, uh, stores throughout Navajo. It basically states that store sales are shown by location. And what's training is almost every store, it spreads sales, the coins. To the city drop ninety three percent due to closure. Pienta, Chimlay, Winrock, Bell, and Shuker also declined. In other words, most stores are selling less each year. This explains a major sales drop, um, that is shown in that table. There is another key table in the audit report, and that is on page seventeen. This one shows store sales by square foot. And the key points that you will see here is that it has the different, um, stores listed. Winrock, Chimlay, Shubak, and Pienta. Basically, what this table shows is, the large, many stores earn low sales for their size. Largest stores often perform worse than smaller ones. Some small stores are more than. In other words, several stores are too big for that, not landing late. This means higher cost and lower profit. So that's what the table shows on page seventeen. There's also an aging report on page fourteen, I think, thirty nine. Um, it's figure five. And basically, um, the aging table on page fourteen shows that. Fifty six percent of unpaid invoices are more than hundred and twenty days late. Many belong to now artists and vendors. In other words, more than half the bills are in organs late. But artists don't get paid, they stop being products, no products means no sales. I will then refer you again to the, uh, incorrect bonus payments. And, um, the key issues there are. Bonuses are paid during financial struggle. Payments are made through accounts payable instead of payable. Payable taxes were not properly withheld. Basically, bonuses were not handled correctly, and they did not follow the rules of the Internal Revenue Service. Or bonus payments are in, and pains to employees. So those key, uh, areas in the report are on pages twelve and twenty nine. In closing. On page eleven, sales are dropping terribly. Page twelve, spending stayed high even when sales fell. Page twelve and twenty nine, bonuses were handled incorrectly. Uh, page fourteen, bills to artists and vendors are very late. Page fifteen, most stores have declining sales. Page seventeen, store productivity is low. Overall, Nace is making less money, spending too much, paying bills late, running underperforming stores. And not handling compensation correctly. These issues together explained by the enterprise is struggling financially. Uh, when the, um, audit was completed, we asked for a response from Nace, and we received one. And that would be within the registration as well. And when they responded, um, they accepted, um, the findings. And then they, at the same time, they had already been working on their corrective action plan. And you will see that attached as well, and you have to have it to the response to the audit report. Our office reviewed the corrective action plan, and we do the corrective action plan. And look to address the findings in this audit. Thank you, that was a presentation of the.
We still have time?
But, but more than, um, sharing her, so that's in the chat, seven, seven, shouldn't have a hand, but she, 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 she. Um, I mean, government, we sound for an arrow, arts and crafts, anyways, um, so. Um, as an audit, we did go through the findings, um. We did begin our corrective action plan, we did, we began implementing those within our source, um. Here, key areas such as marketing, food, outreach, artists indication, sell strategies, and website development. Um, um, as of today, um, Nace has initiated a structured marketing, which forming marketing task force. Will then, um, oversee the events, um, and whatnot. Uh, we also begin to increase our artists' community events, um, we continue to organize artists' demonstrations, local markets. Uh, virtual events designed to showcase, um, artist craftsmanship. Uh, we've also, um, beginning of bringing in some new social shares, and that's a support customer experience, including private places. And that, and in, 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 in. Um, and then we also begin our policy development. So Nace has had, um, big progress in finding our comprehensive side of very emotional operation policies. Development process is now in its final stages, um, with all the permanent procedures consolidated into a unified policy menu. That aligns with recommendations, our own, and the type of connection of products. So we do have all our corrective action plans listed, and we are, um, excited to implement those, and that's concerning to those who are experiencing this. Thank you.
So with that, Madam Chair, I forgot to mention, um, several areas that Resources and Development Committee have a question on. So in order to address the inconsistencies with, um. Bonuses being paid, uh, that was at the request of the customer, how we Nace, uh, look at considering entirely a individual that has accounting background. But one of the other options was looking at a chief, uh, financial officer, but it really comes back down to the. Cash on hand, uh, Navajo Arts and Craft has. So it was reported to us that Arts and Craft was pretty much operating payroll to payroll. But, um, we can report that we've gotten from, um, chief executive officer, Mr. J T Willie. I already see that they were thirty five, thirty seven days. Cash on hand is what I believe they increased it to, but we don't have that definite. Uh, show to tell, um, in writing, uh, in terms of documentation, so. That is one of the areas that was a concern, and the other area is regarding the aging balance. When the accounts receivable, what is their turnover rate? So technically, an average turnover rate is, uh, averaging at about an eight ratio, which means that. The monies that, um, are being received on time. But as it was indicated here, a lot of these aging, um, are pretty much like over a hundred and twenty days. And the recommendation for Resources and Development Committee was maybe now. Um, it's Arts and Craft going to look at a, at a higher, um, payroll deduction, because I believe. There are certain, um, amounts where, um, customers charge, and I think the lowest amount is sixty dollars every bi-weekly. But hopefully increasing that so that they'll, uh, gets their receivables faster. And, uh, again, their aging is a big concern. And also, there's been, um, I understand circumstances where. Customers would purchase on payroll, but they never pay their outstanding balance, and that goes to default. And that is a write-off, and these are the areas of why, um, Navajo Arts and Craft is not making no money. And then the other part is, um, looking at the discounts that are being offered, is it even feasible to go with? Um, the discounts for. Certain, um, customers out there, or how, we just need a cross-the-board, um. Discount, um, formulas for everyone, so that everyone is, um, treated equal, so these were some of the recommendations that are given. And then if you see the, the chart on the corrective action plan that was submitted by Navajo Arts and Craft. Uh, it just states a timeline column, and it just has like ninety days, sixty days, so we want clarification. And it is, uh, brought to our understanding by C E O, Mr. J T Willie, that. That is going to be effective once, uh, this committee. Um, either approves the corrective action plan, and from there, they're going to indicate, um, ninety days to address. Or sixty days, however, they have a structure in this cap. To be able to address these areas, so again, um, it is a big concern. Um, that we do have an enterprise that is operating as such. And, uh, there was recommendations to do a hall over of board members as well, but again, um. We can make. We can make the recommendation, but I leave the, but I leave uh believe the point that's happened by President. Uh Nigrid. So again, we are open to um recommendations. Uh as this committee is seeking to work together to bring a solution that will have this um enterprise be. Uh maximizing the revenue stream again. So I just wanted to add that matter, Chair, and although you'd like to go ahead, we will time out with the two.
Thank you, Chairman. Really, thanks for your presentation today and also for being here. Uh I also know when we get to the committee questions, I just mentioned Jerry Sosa, who legislation. On page three, uh um the actual legislation itself gives now the right to perhaps, yeah, all months. Any within the plan is a recommendation that clearly should be. Through the time, so maybe it's good that resources will lead to continue to follow up those things. Um also, welcome to Chairman.
Uh thank you very much, Jerry. Thank you very much for the program. Thank you very much to Mace for being here. Um I don't like to Monday when we go back to lunch, but it's Tuesday, so I'll hold it Tuesday morning for back. If um. I, we're government official, but. I'll say this, certainly doesn't really, I mean, read a lot of balance sheets, personally analyzing, thinking about business, stock market. Are viable businesses either in the nation that thrive or where the economy is going in general. And if I were picking stocks, if I were to buy a basis stock, I would absolutely, you know, this. After that two million dollar invention was like, and you found there's something wrong, is that right? Um. You know, you guys buy a business and I think that. You do a very difficult job in trying to determine what the customer base is, even have. The original intention of business, you know, the guild assisting. All of our artisans of the nation, helping the market and all that sort of stuff with where the economy is happening. So, you know, there's been serious weakness, say, for eighty percent of US economy. The top of the economy is fine, everything's doing well, people have money, they're relatively continuing to spend. But particularly in the last uh year, few months, you know, credit card balances have increased, it's have increased um. You know, car payment liquidities have increased. Uh there's a whole bunch of things that are showing the net point of the product here at the time. And so much of the business has been focused, it seems like, on, say, the domestic market and public animal leadership. If there's beaker spending on nation, then follows that these will be symptomatic of these that happens to weaken cities in the forty. Uh we probably deduction program and that sort of deal. Um and I think we're just not buying that. But it also follows that. The current board of big leadership inherited a huge issue with one half million dollars and. Essentially unaccounted for inventory that was sitting warehouse. So it's critical that you get proper finance professionals in there, real business professionals, not marketing. Because we have three years of our three professionals who have. Running this, what, two years? Twenty-three, yeah.
Three years.
Yeah, so, yeah, three years, it's the fault, yeah, um. There isn't an increase in performance. It's not like, okay, the rate of decline de- um decreased, right? It's not accelerated. It seems that it is accelerating now, you want to de-selebrate it, that sort of situation. If you inherit um a really problem situation. So. I applaud the committee R and C for moving forward with this. I think that some of the items completely appear related to board tenure. Um getting more business professionals in there with a strong accounting background. Who understand the balance sheet, understand the cost centers and have a longer-term vision for. How to make the business viable, and you're subsidizing some of the things that you think are important. Like support for artisans on mission, keeping certain stores open, then you have to add a little boss profit center somewhere. And I know that that can be very difficult, you know. Natural gas, end tech, all these different businesses, and everybody wants to tell them exactly what to do. Um and ninety-nine percent of that is corrupt, you know, it's just people. They're giving their own ideas, they have no idea their own business. But I. I think the nation is really needs to think long and hard about whether we want to be invested in the consumer segment of the economy. Because of that weakness. Um overall, we're always going to ride these waves, right? This is not the most durable aspect of the investor economy. And in one of the poorest places in the United States, we're going to be the most vulnerable homeless place, homeless assets and goods. So unless we hit it, figure out how to make money elsewhere. And, you know, the clothing, I I get it, you're oriented toward jewelry, et cetera, um. I guess I wouldn't overcorrect on the one half million dollars of clothing inventory when, you know, that could be a net negative. It also could be some in the future um for the enterprise. I don't think it's going to be your primary um cross-center, but it's something to help get people into the building and then get them to spend some of the rest of the. Might not talk, we're going, we'll be going and staying. So I, I would just ask our industry to maybe. Work with us or work with um Sean. Or you can hire consultants. I, I know there are other enterprises who have been working on coordinating, the coordinating committee, maybe we'll get a consolidation of the enterprises. And I think in the future that that's something that may benefit Mace. You might have aspects of the nation's portfolio that are subject to those different weaknesses in the economy. And the ones that, right, other ends of the economy that are doing well, um you know, they could potentially subsidize, you'll be able to. Make strategic investments so that those businesses become viable in the future. But right now, absent. I I gotta say, this is a nice-looking corrective action plan. But again, if I were either investor or I were advising investors. It it's not sufficient. Like, I hate to say this because I have people, I know people on board, I know people with leadership. They're asking me really substantial change. I hope they understand I'm willing to, because. If you get a hundred eighteen thousand dollar set of bonuses in nine months, when. You're also paying out hundreds of thousands of dollars in sponsorships each year with this declining revenue. I mean, if I were a little worker at a store, I'd be. Almost say, I'd be hurt. I'll be, I would be very hurt, right? That there is a belief category of people who are getting bonuses. And the, as the average working man here in the store, they are getting two hundred dollars or whatever, but. In order to engender a feeling of cohesion and purpose and drive. Everyone should build the thing, but leadership, maybe should feel a little bit more. Because you're saying, okay, I'm going to take this on, I want to inspire confidence. And I want all of you to know that I want to be. You know, taking the brunt, bearing the brunt so we can move forward. Um. Chair, I think those are generally my comments. I just. Makes it would have been great if we had had some of the. Leadership here, because. Yeah, I just can't, I guess it is, like, I think. We've seen the Netflix deal, the Parrot, like, there's a lot of big. News that's still on in the last couple of weeks, right? So there's a lot of focus on what board director does, right? Maybe bypass the board directors by authoring a call stack deal to the sheriff, so that's what Parrot has tried, right? Because the board said, oh, we want to sell Netflix for, for one of those issues. Here, you know. I I don't understand how some of these actions could be justified in the fact that there wasn't a business planning. Right? Like, you gear up into business planning for the middle of summer. Like spring to summer, because generally the business on calendar year, it's not an ambitious fiscal year, but that'll govern it. And then you're going full bore on January first and, you know, tailing in from, say, July over December is what the plan is. And it looks like in the review by Tally, there weren't those sorts of things going on. And that's like one of the most deeply concerning things to me, is that some of the most basic, elemental aspects of business leadership. Were being performed. But I pray and I hope that this can continue to be a viable, non-ambition business. But not be able to pay, not like usual, right? I'm assuming a lot of these are smaller artists and vendors, so. You know, it's a few hundred to a few thousand dollars, and then you have hundreds of thousands of dollars going out the door for sponsorship and. I maybe marketing on things and for travel, you know, we just pull this data, because this is. Okay, so figure three on page twelve. Fiscal year twenty-two, actual travel expenses, twenty-two, about twenty-two thousand dollars. Fiscal year twenty-three, actual a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Twenty-four, a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. Twenty-five, two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. That's the budget. Um the first three just were actuals. So they're showing the eighty-three percent change. Bonus twenty-two, about nine thousand, twenty-three, a hundred fifteen, hundred thirteen thousand, twenty-four. A little under sixty-six thousand, and then twenty-five, a hundred eighteen thousand, that's eighty percent. Sponsorship in twenty-two, seven hundred fifty-four dollars, actual of twenty-three, two, about two hundred seventy-four thousand. Actual is one four, about one thousand, and then the budget for twenty-five, about a hundred forty-eight thousand. And then donations, none in twenty-two, in twenty-three went to about twenty-three thousand dollars. And twenty-four got there in one, and budgeted for twenty-five, about forty-one thousand dollars. The contractual services stayed relatively flat within the sixty thousand dollar range. The budget twenty-five is budgeted for twenty-nine-five thousand. So. Each dollar that goes out of the door needs to have a strategic purpose. If if you're going to be viable, you guys know when you're viable, but, you know. I I'm not in charge of the business, but on behalf of my people, I'm asking you to stay in business and I hope that. That is the mantra going forward. Every dollar that goes out of the door is going to have a return on that investment, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Charles there, and not hearing specific questions back with off their recommendations to the first and back enterprise. Members, if you can, if you have also any questions, okay, glad that you're happy.
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh thank you for um continuing to provide us information um in audits. And letting us know how um any of the businesses and all the chapters we're doing, kind of the nations. I think working together, we really do need to understand um our finances, especially at this. Part of time. Um I did review your audit before and I did send a email. On the hundred nineteen to the audit general. The next day she filled, she did forward this email uh to JT Willie. And I wish she was here so I could ask him why he has this uh sent the requested documents. Um I do see um the red flags here, um especially the bonus payments that violate IRS rules. Um if CEO bonus in twenty-twenty-five is a hundred and eighteen thousand. Alone, and they're paid through accounts payable, but they're reported. You know, ten ninety-nine instead of the W two. That's a misclassification and that violates the federal tax law. And that's going to expose Mace to that Texas penalties and interest. And that's very concerning because your enterprise is supposed to represent. Our artists, our silver slip, and anyone who's bringing business to you for the national. And I feel like that's a slap to the face of all the artists across the nation. And very disappointed that you're treating this business as. Because I think everybody here, everybody in this room has jewelry. You know, we wear our piece jewelry very proudly. And so there's also somebody in our families who are silver slip. And so I'm very, very upset. So this letter, I want to turn this into attractive. And I want to make sure that I see these documents. Because this is very important and I'm just saying I'm very upset. I do not ever want to see another audit like this from natural arts and craft. Do you understand? Make sure you tell this to JT Boy. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, um. So yeah, RDC have direct oversight of Mace and in. In the committee, look for. Um they made some recommendations um that are really recommendations to the cells. Um recommended that Mace's plan of operations be amended to limit the board members' terms to four million dollars. And that the CEO of Artic, so we would get an update before on a cap within six months from the date. Uh it was September seventeen, and that Mace had accounted um and changed. It's a thought that I wrote about just opening up a project a few weeks ago, um so. The better place for um this directive to have been done at RDC. We don't have the right oversight, um because I talked to. I sent a email to the committee. At least, but we can have the audit committee, we can ask to the, as an enterprise, to give us the interesting. Because we've done that with your. Even had the enterprise before, it's based on the financials. Actually, yeah, there's a list of issues, we find, find, find. We can tell you, and it's possible, how well it is, you're at, you know, because there are. That look, and it's. This is a busy business, I trust, you change.
You can send a letter to them.
Oh, okay, Sean has a legend before, yeah, oh, it's the same. So I guess. Okay, Sharon, I'll see you. Um thank you for your request here, uh that was our. From the advice from the Office of Legislative Council. Maybe you can see through the record, your recommendation that's the resource and development committee, so we can note it for the committee report. And it also has charity issues, so also take note, so we can make that recommendation that's at RDC, so maybe if you want. Specifically outline uh what you would like, and then I could also send the gentleman to the chair, please, to.
Um thank you for that recommendation. Um I will go ahead and forward this email on to uh Sharon Suse, but in the. Letter I'm requesting Mace's fiscal year line item budget by the department includes the payroll and projected revenues. First one, second copies of all ten ninety-nines, missile, missile days and W two violates for. Calendar year twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four. Three, bonus payment, memos, board authorization and approval documentation of all bonuses paid for calendar. Year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five. Four, internal control drafts and status track them, you know, with a financial. With a financial consultant. Five, vendor aging reports detailing calculating invoices. Including the dates and the amount.
Including the dates and the amount over ninety days due. Six, corrective action plans submitted by NACE, which I think is in this document here. Seven, uh, program who dot com relaunch documentation, including budget plans, contracts, IT issues raised. Regarding domain access. Eight, RDC's internet tracking logs showing dispersment. And concurrent records of this calendar year twenty-three and twenty-four. Nine, Board of Directors meeting minutes of for budget and for budget approval and executive performance evaluation. For calendar, calendar years twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five. Ten, employee competence reality agreements used by NACE and their state of legal designation. And I would like to respond to everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon, and members of the committee. Does anyone else have any questions to fill up to the legislation?
Shout out from the uh Office of Auditorium. I don't think you can mention, I cannot hear and I apologize. Are you gonna look for any of these findings to ethics and rules? And um are they also when we need to be the officer of the prosecutor, my fellow friend? Um, if that's not part of the recommendation, then I would um ask our legislative council. Look at some of that many years from the shirt oversight, discuss uh those options. And we're trying to get better meeting notice chair from RDC. Uh, all of our meetings are, you know, which is simply the best word for it. Um, you know, the AI thing, what you said, that's what I go. I'm trying to duplicate what RDC already has and had now, but if it comes to the budget issues and the money issues. I would actually know auditor general's recommendations. For ethical or for the point of. This is the thing that we direct auditor general to submit. Yeah, to the head of the nation, that's the old office. And uh, officer of the positive in the right, always trying, wanting to say that was part of this thing, I was doing safety check always. Yeah, I think you should have shown the evidence that that you have this time, I'll go over to Chair Lee Seuss to respond.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, Madam Chair, and also to Chair Prady. Uh, thank you for the concerns and also to other colleagues that had. Uh, made some recommendation and comments. So in regards to the area that Chair Prady had brought up. Uh, that was um not a discussion that we've had, because uh, one of the discussions um. After hearing from NACE and uh, and we had a small debriefing after Resources and Development Committee. Uh, that is one of our big concerns is how do we make our enterprises accountable and transparent in regards to. Uh, the very purpose of why Navajo Nation had established these enterprises after Navajo Nation. And that's um, the um, there was supposed to subsidize money back to the government, but. With um, this enterprise financial, uh, and its financial health is struggling. Uh, we did um resort to saying that we wanted to work with this committee. And also the Controller's Office, and we'd like to have, you know, those dialogues and how we would best um assist um NACE. And also, um, the good recommendation is to hire the professional. Uh, staff that have these uh backgrounds in terms of um actually running a business and. Hopefully, you know, get this uh enterprise back out of its um. Uh, current operations right now that isn't really profitable, so. But and with the other question in line with that, I'd like to go ahead and yield time over to Office of the Auditor General. Manager.
Yeah, thank you for the discussion on the audit in regards to your session. About uh referring this uh to white collar agreement and ethics and rules. No, our office does not refer uh this to white collar agreement or ethics and rules. Um, but we, we certainly can. And to see if there have been any violations that allow the parts to.
Also, I'll request um Legislative Council just please that we all come and try and meet. And you have a few other questions, and then the biggest thing you need to come up.
I think right is sweet, but. No, you're gonna hold on this legislation, no one is.
Okay, appreciated. That will move um on the directive after we vote on this cap. Uh, what I would like, um. If Office of Legislative Services working with Office of Legislative Council, their research team. Who pull um. NACE, I I just said, obviously, I was gonna look at the plan of operations. But we should collectively start looking at what are our options as a council, since we're creating these um enterprises. But they have um, you know, they're armed slave of the government for all kinds of reasons. Um, then just like the chapters, um, try to turn cases. I asked the question, so if you're certified, and you're not properly following your own financial, like your own FMS. Then what's the process to be certified? And my question is here, as an enterprise that has demonstrated their ability not to. Financially manage their funding. And what are our options right now? Well, what should we look at? Because when I'm speaking with Head Start, it's a program. There had to be like immediate action. But it is in a separate. This is kind of a separate situation on what council can do within our work. Uh, to secure the funding. So uh, I'm just thinking back with chapters, you would ask ASC to manage their houses. And I don't think for the enterprise units, and they're just yet independent. That's what we could ask Office or Controller, an independent entity, to start managing those funds. So that's their property, uh, using their policies, their procedures. Follow the oversight and RDC developed here the time of operation. Understand, and you know, with the comments, yes, they're, they're making changes. But it does sound like this is. And. So that's why I just raised the level of, or some of our offices, and I'm not sure if that enterprise in the past. You know, NHCA goes through a lot of issues. Um, and one time, uh, in the twenty-third, also noted in the game, I remember this, some others who were working. Uh, NHCA was in such a shape that we had to take immediate action towards. And so that's why I'm asking what are other steps that we can do to have a clear sign. That we're concerned about this financial um audit. And um, the clear sign that, because it's being worded here, how the enterprise. Regain that trust in the of, of the collective, of the artists, and um. So I just wanted to see if there's, there was a conversation at RDC. Um, I know that we look at the audits also for the enterprises, and this may be the. Um, as I know the dead development corporation has been talking to all the enterprises about merging. And so they really need the technical assistance. Like, it sounds like they don't know what they don't know, because of the knowledge base that they have there. But they do need, they need others to come in, a professional capacity to come in. And I, I'm not sure that they're only at thirty, what, thirty-two days out on cash. We're, we're in a, a violent situation here, probably. So I would like to ask too, like with the investment committee, I'm not sure, um. If there's ability here, or because we have change last. Page Labs has that funding and that SSBI even loaned. Maybe the option is someone's research is NACE is eligible for that loan, because the controller did say like a large amount. To be, to leave the requirement. And maybe change or another entity who works there with the artists to be part of the solution. Or like connect a chamber of comrades. I know, um. I just keep thinking like in thirty days, because I have employees who are working there. So I'm out going bill, so we need some, we're going somewhere in the financial liability for the nation, and then what are some of our options? Uh, with all the different funding that we have, um, and if that needs to be legislated. I only can do it here in this corrective action plan, but I just wanted to compare basis for options, um, and um. And if we could get that reset, that would be like. Uh, Chair, those are some of the, this recommendations, not exact questions, uh, but I just wanted to state that in the record. Uh, because this, this may pivot, um, you know, the council to look at the enterprises. We've talked about it in the past, but if they're not financially stable, there's not a way to offer a dividend. Uh, you have a lot of sponsorships in the past, and if that's how the enterprise was feeling, like contributing back to the nation. Like, we should have a clear idea of what is being asked from the enterprise, because we don't know if there's political pressure. In the sponsor these events, like I have no data, um, but we, we should lay that out clearly. So that there's transparency, and it could be part of, if it's not part of their audit, I don't know how they do a promotion. But they definitely can report that separately to us. Uh, you know, uh, this office requested this sponsorship, um, council speaker requested this sponsorship. And so we just have a better understanding, but it does sound like there's every institution, maybe the health and support. Um, I think that I appreciate it. Is someone from the elite OPV panel? I, I heard they're decorating the Christmas tree.
Where is the Christmas tree?
In front of the president's office. While, while we go to enterprise.
Thank you for that, uh, Madam Chair, and also Madam Chair Prady. Uh, this was the recommendation, um, exactly what you mentioned with Navajo Housing Authority several years ago. So the recommendation, and we did, um, uh, let, um, our general counsel with, um, RDC knows. Marionne Khan, what options are, can we take this approach is to remove the current board? And um, select one member from every committee, so it would be now the key at it, budget finance, LOC. Um, Hess and RDC to just be the temporary board until such time that. Now, Artic Crafts um fulfills the corrective action plan, and not only that. Um, we were seeking, um. You know, how do we get Controller's Office involved to possibly get a, um. A financial um firm to be able to just dissect into their financials. Meaning that they're the ones that are collecting the money, they're the ones that are now overseeing all the monthly financials. Until such time that everything comes back to uh normal, and there's, you know, quite a bit of uh profit coming in. Then it can be transitioned back over to um the enterprise, and that was the option. So again, there still has uh yet a lot of work to be done there, and we still have to sit down. And I was really hoping that Mr. Willie was gonna be here today as well. I am disappointed, just let him know. And um, I thought that you were the, the accountant, and I guess you're not, you're the public liaison.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I hope. And I thought that Mr. Ray Tracy was gonna be here, because he was at RD Willie meeting, and he's one of the board members. So again, um, I really think that, um. Resources and Development Committee needs to sit back down with, um. Artic Enterprise, but we need a solid plan going forward. You know, a um temporary plan that can be implemented, and I don't know if that would be. You know, the proper approach to go is just to remove the board, and again, one member of every committee in twenty, twenty-five nomination council. At least to sit on the board to make sure that it gets back on off the, off the ground. Um, to financially sound out. In regards to the decertifying option that you mentioned. That idea was thrown around, but it all comes back down to the plan of operation, how that plan of operation was structured. So again, there are needs uh to be a better methodology in place, and I'm really glad that you put that on the record. You said that the enterprises are operating at arms length. Um, and I'm gonna put this on the record, that NACE um wasn't cooperative in responding to. Um, the committee in requesting, um, uh, the audit for twenty-twenty-four, calendar year twenty-twenty-four. And um, that still hasn't been provided to the committee. And it was hard to even get responses or when, you know, NACE can come back before, you know, the committee. So, um, with, with issues like this, it's very, and we were at the point where we were gonna subpoena. The CEO, the board members, but I'm glad that Mr. JT Willie had responded, and that's how we're able to get this report on the committee. So these are some of the challenges that we're faced with, and I really think that, you know, this council could try to, um. Uh, dive that, uh, dive back into the plan of operation for these enterprises and actually hold them accountable. And what would be the um penalty and circumstances as such right now, because this is really not good. And I've been getting a lot of, um, constituents and even our employees of the Navajo Nation that are saying the price is so outrageous. And that's the reason why when the auditor, um, had reported that. There's hardly any more sales, because prices are just skyrocketing. So when you talk about inflation. You know, in the households or the pocket of people, are we really gonna be paying five grand for jewelry that? Maybe you can go down the road and get from a direct supplier at a very, very cheaper price. So these are the areas that really need to be revamped, and when we're talking about the marketing aspect and the purchasing component of. Um, of uh Artic Craft, so I am open, and we just need that legal, um, advisement to say that. You know, how the approach that we need to make to remove the board and possibly place them to the one member committee of council. And start working with the enterprise and hopes that we get them back up to speed. In regards to why they were established, you know. At the, I believe, seven decades ago is when they were established. So again, this is a big concern, and I'm glad that. You know, colleagues have triggered this, and I know other colleagues of the council have been bringing this to members of this committee. So that's just really the response I had at this time, um, Madam Chair, thank you.
I know this has been. So issue in that condition, you know. Not a whole issue, but I know our run abilities. First of all, I think that the number one thing they do is look for themselves and defend. And. It hurts the people, yeah. And, you know, look what they did, I guess, within the last two years, you know, they put up. Um, a building up here by Gell on the outside. I don't know, they built a building, or they just used a building, somebody built it, they put money into, they lost money. Or now they own that building, now they're just, where, it seems like some silver companies pick up over that building, I don't know. And call. Um. When you put all we know. I know, but you know, being like black ball in myself here. You know, these committees that work on these oil companies, electric company, you see me whatever. It does not work in the office. I don't want to be on no career. General chief. I learned on my first program that it's nice because you check any commitment. We're paying. The corporates paying fifty dollars to an attorney. Big money. They're not even from. They have nothing to do with that. They flying from all over the place. For this one special meeting that we don't have. Right? So. They pay those people good money. And. I wish we had a. A leadership meeting that we can just kind of kick the ball around and come up with a plan. You know, not only. Each committee has its little group, but maybe from. Oh maybe a nine group or ten group from outside the Navajo Nation, nothing to do with the council. But from our community. Where we don't have a insight. All we've been hearing reports. From the outside people that are looking at us. There's good people out there that want to come back. That are sharp enough from the community. But you know, they know that. Um. It's a mafia group that did and wins a lot. You look at all our organization there. Like what person eat um. Managing spinae, it's all his little group. There's no other people that's gonna be working for him. So we don't even even though they tell us we're long workers. We cannot speak out and say hey. This is wrong. Look what's happening now. It doesn't, does not work. Our attorneys. I hate to say it. Or judge judicial system. Everybody knows it's a king and. And shall we get these people to obey? And stick by the law to make these rules? Things will change. Because. You know, when you get. Died here on the reservation. It says we're a federal government, right? But. They don't try me at a federal. Employee. They just slap your hand. Right? They'll let you go in three months. You're done. But. You should be tried in the federal level because. We keep going on the P I A one nine C F R rules. Stating that. This is what. We go by in court. When they reach the forty nine C F R. They don't buy by it. So. If they saw like that moving. What our boss says. Maybe we'll be running out there. The chapter official will not be stealing money. All these things that won't be happening because there's no. They'll be scared. But you know, like I think overseas somewhere, you steal money or steal a candy, they cut you off, right? You do something bad, they cut something off, right? That's how they operate. They know that in that picture, if you think that. Their label, right? But that's what you kind of need to know. Look at it. Oh, my God, they're they've done bad things. They gotta work with it because we don't have a law for ourselves. The present same ways, they don't have a law on. Though until we kind of change this, maybe. Um. I know our focus are always. Band they unite, they wouldn't. Put their relatives in there, your parents. It's bad. And that that's bad. Even the check was the same way. You know, they work the same way. The market group operations, so. You know. I'm glad you guys brought it up and at least we're talking about what's going on here in big mountain, you know, that so. Um all this money that we've had, but. And we don't even help the one that or they don't need it. You know. So did anybody else just comment that so? Um don't worry, anything. Um how's about it? Maybe. There's a group where. Somebody, you know. You started something going that how do we change this? You know, the deep branch government, maybe it's time to change now with this. Re pushing thing that's coming around to you. They're just telling us what. They brought in somebody that has been in that foundation government. He did that a study. And they say, okay, this is the way we're gonna do it. That's his thinking. Is whether that mission should work. But he didn't give it to their people. Because the people are saying, oh, look, they're not. Tomorrow, they all have that. Um election board meeting. At nine, I think. To make that decision on door number one, two, three, four, to move that thing forward. And here they put in there that we need to up their concert deputy. But it's not in the climate. You know? So how that gonna work if people are sending, you know, a decision, I mean, up the council delegate? So. To me, I told them that, well, I'm like. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna work, but there's one fault. Don't come back to us and I know we're not gonna approve it. Everybody's not gonna approve that. Mine that they got, so. Anybody wants to come, you should have it. And thank you for your hard work, that's true.
Yeah, thank you, all right, Herman Lee Day. Uh next we have the last two.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's get the questions, thank you, uh. And Chair, it seems very good for your presentation. This afternoon to budget finance today. I do also appreciate the members of the budget finance committee. For highlighting the concern regarding higher expenditure and lower revenue. Also, there's another area that we want to address with the complaint with uh voices. So um one question that I have is, um now we can the um the highlights of this order. There was uh some stores that were the results now, but also it's from you can ask about the personnel. They're going to ask it. That has made the financial insight on um making a lot of gain in what is uh what is uh in this next project. The other one is um. The uh we know this this reporting is like maybe a couple of months old, but uh under recognition. Uh creating till this time till we launch the program. And this day, you have a lot of uh online uh folks that appear shopping and how they uh. Who uh they purchase. So in your, you said internal uh resources are insufficient. Outsource the project to be qualified, let it go. So within the time running, since this house been completed, I don't know that's. Been accomplished because people doing online sales. You have a lot of several other benefits. Including uh who is uh view uh your website um. Who is made a purchase? And so there's those benefits you do, um a website, online to make the event happen. The human right public uh research and platform. So those will be my two questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Donnie. Well, we're going to go back to our sponsors, your chairman and your ladies.
Thank you for that question. Uh Alex, go ahead and turn over to uh Mace.
Thank you. Thank you, manager. Um our goal. Yeah, I think I'm just answer your first question. Are there downsides and the um downsizing of our stores and personnel? Uh we did have stores that were in Crown Point Gala. Um Gala was open because um the Navajo should be closed. So we opened the Gala store to um. Hit the doubt because that was open during the pandemic. So uh we did close that store because um we weren't making any money at that store, more or less we were spending um. Paying more rent and utilities rather than paying money there. So we did do a little um. Little um survey, we said. Um so we did, most of those that shop there are near our store. Are those that come from those communities such as Crown Point Gala and um Chupacine. The reason why they come to them when they're out and they do shop there is because they do say that um. They're there for business, so they would. Come down and shop. Rather than both of them and Crown Point all the other. Um with rock is our main help, so. Being where I'm at, I would be everyone that comes to me from those communities. So that would be the reason for the store closures because we are more making money than those stores. I would do generally evaluation that your stores, if they come out to me. Uh it would be feasible for us to give the stores because we don't make any very relevant spend there. Um so let's hear your next question regarding websites. Um let me just provide a brief update on websites. Um. So as you um box over, we did relaunch our go now for websites. Um. We did, we currently have an average in our contract for that website. We have no outside um entity who is um providing assistance with the contract. Um. We did have some issue regarding the donation back in twenty twenty two. Um the go now development website was um locked. We weren't able to gain access from that from previous leadership. So the transition from that leadership to the new leadership. Um they did take the submit simply because everything um the demands, most of the the many. But since everything was limited personal website, their personal meetings. So um it was hard for us to gain access to them. Um we did have to. Establish a universal email to prevent hold um most of everything such as our websites. Our X R platforms such as um TikTok and all of the platforms um which sound like the Indian. Um and. There are lots of it's funny, I think, really. Um. So um yeah, so for websites are made um target audience would be outside the reservation. Um since we've been, since the website has been out in the market, we think it orders from not on the reservation. Uh those being um Pasadena, um out Texas, Oklahoma, the third one being out North East. All setting as the negatives. So um. The website is helpless significantly, but we do go through on several obstacles such as um. Promoting the websites. Uh we've tried to vote using um. Sources such as TikTok, we have three, we have three issues with that one. Um. That will be about eighteen sort of spots.
Chair, um you have A G's office that wants to add.
Uh yeah, A um. When uh tap presented this information, there were options in regards to. Uh that they thought that nation consider and that was um. She stated that um to ensure go America dot com becomes a viable e-commerce platform. Or consider external retail options such as Amazon marketplace to increase reach. So I'm not sure if that uh private recommendation will address the barriers that we've just described, you know? And just on another note, um historically, um. Uh a personal level in my family. Um my grandpa Yazi and my grandma Yazi used to actually. Live and work out at the camera store way back in the late sixties, early seventies. So I find it very interesting sitting here now. And I know that my grandpa Yazi, um he has his ghirli still out there. You know, with families. So um it's a shame that um these stores have closed because historically they have. You know, helped our Navajo people and and various, you know, over the various decades. Uh that way.
Yeah, thank you, Miss Lee. Uh and Chair, you see for your responses to vote a delegate show the Gazi. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I wanted to ask, sorry, uh a question on the. It sounds, it seems like the one of the board members was Denise Powell, yeah? Like the tap international and I think the packet there is a letter. Was sent um. From uh J T Willie. To her, it looks like for. I guess that's what I want to look at. I don't, it doesn't have a page number. Maybe it's after page forty. You know, kind of, you know, whatever. So I wanted to know the relationship. Is she a board member or is she? Um somebody who's overseen and do an audit for Mace? Has, what's that relationship look like? I'm kind of confused on that. And the other thing is, if there was so much crying, at least I don't know for for the individual who. Even for the board members, why did we not put um Mr. Willie unadmittedly? If there was this much concern from this audit, you know, it should have been done before. Um that those were my questions for now. Thank you. The board members are on the memo from the auditorium now towards the bottom of the page. Um big share conferences, we're sent to Jerome Cersei, Ray Tracy, Eugene Bege, just the potential showing the Latin. And then this is the hand of comedy. And they were also included in the email that I had said. Thank you. All right, go back to uh myself really to respond and uh first of all.
Yeah, I think um that it, you know, see in regards to your question, how the level is laid out is. Uh uh Jerome Cersei, Ray Tracy, Eugene Bege and Sasha Raffi, the board members of Mace. Then on bottom and bottom of it, Denise Powell, this is as president, but she's president of Tap International Incorporated. The uh audit uh consulting that conducted the audit of of the of this uh Mace organization. Uh it is our standard practice to. It is our standard practice to uh uh. Include uh. The Intercity that is around the five in the now.
Yeah, thank you, Donnie. Thank you, uh Miss Lee for providing us on members of the committee. Thank you for the question. What I've heard from the committee today is that Mace will analyze their target and and also analyze the time of the nation. Because of their primary target, our Navajo population, also he's a church of the the family of the Navajo nation. Um however, that goes back to our C's representation that who is hired, who they get a room on. I believe what the city has also some of us is that their personnel budget for the Navajo arts and press enterprise is very tough heavy. Um and that's unfortunate to those stores that close because those are just clerks that lost their job. So you know, we're still in large personnel expenditure and a lot of it has been losing the guns and hostage. However, this all can't be solved today. So I'm gonna go to Chairman um Eric. Uh appreciate it. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the charity things. For uh making the committing all the challenges that influenced and helped it. And cooperation from the enterprise. On the twenty fourth council, we had similar challenges with N T A. Because I do know and we could verify um. There should be a provision requiring enterprises to submit annual reports. But we actually had a subpoena of N T A. And we had a work with controller at that and was confirmed perfectly. Right? And um and they should be submitted at the very least to the controllers on this. Uh so we've got in mind, um Chair, I want to table this perfect action plan. To request that uh the C E O. Attend uh this meeting on the correct action plan. And we're getting a meeting to be accountable and um since they are the decision makers. And um. And need to be able to answer uh the committee.
And um, and need to be able to answer uh, the committee's questions. Well, Shira, I appreciate that you're here on behalf of the enterprise, but to have like the public information officer here is uh, just not acceptable, because we understand um, some more systemic decisions that need to take place, like I mentioned, in terms of um, how do we, how do we stop the hands of people of dollars? And um, how do we uh, protect our investment and liability, um, and the impact to, um, the employees of the enterprise? With that being said, I want to see you all to our next uh, meeting, uh, to have our staff able to confirm with um, Madam, I'm actually craft's C E O. I would love to have other C suite officials, but they should be received. And um, and at least one representative from the board, or at least some more representative, so that we can understand how they're monitored. Hey, and I just wanted to mention, and I work with the Office of Legislative Council on this. Uh, their contracting party in terms of spending, there is a court order that does state it's a conflict heard of. Council delegates to be on board, it was a different governing body. Um, but I do see that legislations are still drafted uh, with that conflict, and so um, we would need to continue to have that dialogue. And um, I mean, in terms of having a representative some oversight, I, I wouldn't support because of our work mode currently, and the work that we have to do to amend some of these critical laws. Um, I, and so what our focus should be on legislative policy. Uh, but this could be an opportunity to uh, reach out and provide uh, other professionals with expertise to bring in and um, help for at least guide good the enterprise, you know, both individuals who have uh, either experience of the nation, um, working with artists. And um, because really this should be an international market. And they should have just relied, and, and I remember this report, they relied heavily on these months, like it's a, those are those, December, April, November. There's three months out of the year that they basically ride away from national nation employees. And because, the reason why I know that is I have heard Controller Kirk at that time had suspended um, employees to be able to make purchases of them, it was payroll production, because they literally, like their whole payroll was going to be made. So see, there, it's like, so, you know, there, there has to be a special, but if that's like very chunk of funding, we need to understand where someone needs to get a, some, I love, we need to know if it's a policy decision. We need to know, we need to resolve with the enterprise, and obviously, you know, in this period of reform that we're in here with national nation government, this makes you the opportunity for um, like the divisions or commerce or others, uh, to you know, to write up. From my table, so our next meeting, but really it's to make sure that the C E O's, these C officials, I can't, and the, um, the board president, and other board members, but I would reflect those between the, um, I have, I have some type of question, and they would be able to provide that information. Chair, that's my answer to this.
Yeah, thank you, members of the budget and finance committee. Uh, we have a motion for a decision, two four, two, two, five. Uh, we are, we have a second from Vice Chair Professor Slater, comes with any, any questions, I don't think so. The delegate order is the eight, any book, three? All right, Delegate Cheryl Gazi, any books, three, three, and show the investments for Friday, any book, I don't think. Yeah, and we share with Chairman Ericus the Friday book screen, the Delegate Gazi, any books?
I'm sure as well.
The Delegate Gazi book screen, we, and then Vice Chair Professor Slater, book screen as well. We have five, I found it was an affirmative, so we, and um, no, all the numbers are here, so, one, the first legislation, two, four, two, two, five. Thank you, Chairman Haste, uh, and that next meeting may not be until next year, but we'll see you all then.
What was that, Sarcha?
I just said that, and I think you won't be in next year.
Until next year? Yeah, I can just work quickly.
Uh, I just want to thank the Budget and Finance Committee for um, taking the opportunity to listen to what's spoken, two, four, two, two, five. It is a big concern, and I also will be requesting another audit for Native Broadcast Enterprise, as they are not financially happy right now. Um, K T and, and we also had a hard time trying to get ahold of the um, general manager and the board members as well. And um, I am going to be requesting a performance audit request to Office of the Auditor General as well, so that's just an F Y I. And I just think that we need to start doing that for all the enterprises. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Shirley, you too.
I want to make some chair, we have, um, developed supplemental for the auditor general. Supplemental funding for them, I have seen this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So if you could work for the auditor general, what's, like, is what they line it up, and then we'll know.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, I'll get together then, thanks. Thank you. Thank you for lunch, by the way.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you staff. Uh, we do have a director's language, the vice and motion colleagues uh, that we're sending forward with the narrative as um, to follow the the enterprise, top, you know, B O, and we're going to put up here, um, and so that's the first, the direct, uh, auditor general. So if, uh, Mr. Tony can read that into the record.
That chair is a bunch of, the, the record reads as follows, the Budget Committee, as I will fill with the nomination office of the Auditor General on this program, and the orders with two N N C sections, three M one B thirteen, if it can be pursuant to two N N C sections, one eighty nine B, is all registration directed to the division Department of Office of Minutes Oversight Authority on December nineteen twenty five, and the committee learned to prove it directed to the Office of Directive States, directed to the National Nation Office, the Auditor General, the Auditor General is directed to forward the violations indicated in the Honor for Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprises to the Office of Ethics and Rules to further, that's again, take corrective action on such violations, the Office of the Auditor General is to report back to the Budget Committee on the forward of violations in the United Corrective Action Plan and legislation number zero two four two dash two five for Navajo Arts and Crafts Enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Tony, to your second to the directory on the floor. Chair, um, to fill out your chairman out, second motion, there was maybe any questions to that? Right, here guys, uh, Delegate Cheryl Gazi, votes three, Chairman Intermiss, I think we vote, one, two, three, four. Chairman Intermiss, our primary votes three, Delegate Lassie, I think, that you go. Delegate Lassie, guys, votes three. Delegate Norman Beade, votes three, also Vice Chairman Cross, there you go. Great. We have five members voting on affirmative, zero opposed themselves, not voting in the motion, sorry, because they are clear to the Office of the Auditor General. Thank you. All right, members of the committee, um, legislation two five, one, two, five. That was, uh, before, before we even take motion on that, I just wanted to give clarification from Office of Legislative Council, the Division of Community Development. The question the committee had regarding this legislation was when the deadline was regarding cap thirty five fifteen? And whether this legislation was in order, uh, because we have been looking for cap for cap thirty five eighteen. And uh, this person Lowell has informed me that she's still meeting in answer from the Division of Community Development. Uh, so we can see this Candace Gazi here, so this Candace Gazi, are you prepared to respond to our questions on when the deadlines? Okay, uh, just a quick explanation that your timeline would be great, before we do that, as I said.
This is, the only question was, when is the deadline for the cap thirty five to not a legislation, we just wrote it down, what, well, according to Chris, did she ask you guys what is the deadline in this topic?
Okay, so, so. Thank you for the question, Chair Kristen Shandee first. I'm Candace Gazi, uh, Director of Division of Community Development. It's nice to be here. Michelle Peterson, Department Manager for C P N D is here to answer your question of when was the deadline for cap thirty five eighteen. Here's Michelle, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. The uh, to year one, after the extension was due, the deadline was November of twenty twenty four. Year two was the deadline of this past month, twenty twenty five, and year three will be next year, November twenty twenty six. And Whopper Will has had two extensions, has had two change forms, yeah, that, go ahead, please.
Like, what, what kind of mechanism did they resign because?
Okay, we're just talking about the deadline, before we do this, well, that's a question, we don't have a slot here, so. First, um, the committee would like to know how we can get a, that, so, this, that, or it's gonna be too many. Or sorry, November twenty twenty four, November twenty five, and November twenty six. So we could share how you, I can.
That's always been a, a gray area. And for the division with C P N D, we've always used those dates as we're moving forward with the, with the uh, extensions. So uh, primarily, I would have to go back into time to find exactly how that started and who made that decision. Uh, I do believe, uh, I did ask a couple of questions on that, and at the time, it was the Controller, Ms. Kirk at the time, who, this is where we're starting, and then boom, boom, boom. But I would need more. Yeah.
That's probably the issue, putting, yeah. So I think that you need to see, you know, I would make. Just clarify. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, please, on the fair, if we're gonna ask you anything, this is bad for shore reasons, and we put the things you clearly provided, you know. This really, this, I believe. I mean, I mean, it's not, we're talking about millions of dollars here.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Peterson, and also Ms. Gazi for that response. However, we'll need I think you and us, we all need clarification on when that deadline is. So, uh, members of the committee, uh, is it unanimously agreeable that we want, like, to ask you if they should provide that legal review on cap thirty five eighteen? But anyone that, anyone that deals with that? Yep, to your question, you're right. When the deadlines are. All right, members of the committee, Mr. Rotis, who will be sending you a memo, or Mr. Rotis, who at the P O J, will lead your addressing this chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, this is Mel Rotis from Tax and Finance Unit at the O J. Um, if you would please send the, the memo to the acting A G and the delegated uh, deputy A G, and then they'll, they'll assign that to me most likely. Thank you.
I, or the council has not seen that.
It says on, appointing for the law said we recommend.
So this spells out, I didn't receive a, um, of her, I don't know. And no memo on to our Attorney General, I think, for any, for whatever position. I, I don't know, this is, so, anyways, Mr. Rotis, is that you, and who else?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what was the question?
Uh, yes, thank you, so, um, there is a long to another discussion that we had at council at our special session. I did reportedly request on the word that Office of Legislative Council provides guidance to uh, the council regarding resident migrants, uh, in number twenty six memo. Recommend and appointing Chris feature as the Attorney General. But what the law states is President recommends and council appoints. And so I have not seen a recommend, I have not seen a recognition memo from President Niker's office in terms of, um, that office was presented in recommending, uh, for national nation councils, uh, thanking the Attorney General. Okay, so I think also you send to the view that, um, there are none of them there, that any of them did that? No, for the big job, I would say, yeah. Yeah, and I tried to, I said, I'm, 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 I'm. I mean, we can't just avoid this, I think what happened with components.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Intermiss, for inviting to the word of the Office of Legislative Council to give that, uh, any candidates for the committee. And they can service or providing that mission. At this time, the committee will request from the Department of Justice a legal review of the deadline for cap thirty five eighteen. And the committee has uh, already voiced, I think, will not take any action on the decision regarding cap thirty five eighteen until uh, proper guidance given, so. Our Office of Legislative Council has asked Division of Community Development, so they also stated that it's great, you're a guest, so now we're going to the O J for that. But, so, members of the committee, that's we're going to go from here, and Chairman Intermiss, the time.
Uh, yes, in addition, I have to uh, request that Office of the State of Council review uh, this legislation. They do identify, uh, Ms. Gazi as the Division of Community Development Executive Director, uh, that is not, um, correct. Ms. Gazi has not lobbied for council for appointment, um, and, um, Javaj, you also introduced yourself here to the committee as the Division of, um, Community Development Director, and that currently is, um, not your status. And we have to be clear and change how we talk about these, um, political appointments and the role of council and the role of president. And the authority, uh, there is proposed legislation being drafted like in, I don't know how many weeks, on, um, clarifying the authority of a recommended candidate. And so, um, we talked about, uh, there's not a position in the national nation's personnel qualification plan, and so I'm not exactly sure how these individuals are getting paid there. So, um, we're doing some more investigation work, and, uh, and so I'm going to ask that Office of Legislative Council, uh, assist in making sure, um, how they're drafting the legislation is consistent with the current status of, uh, the uniform. Uh, because, um, who's next? Do I retain myself ambassador? Ambassador of the NACDA. And. Right, and then I just go start, I mean, they're going to Washington, they're they're talking on behalf of the national. And they're not even. Appointed by the council. And they are part of the elite. In terms of salary. Compensation. And so I'd like to mention that while we're talking about this, some people are legislation, thank you, Chair. Because I will make a remarks to clarify.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, Chairman, and Vanessa, I thought. We will work with the Office of Legislative Council to ensure that legislations are. Being. They're are are. Legally sufficient. It's important that we do. Eye on that because yesterday, the court hearings. The opposing counsel did. So I was about, oh, I'll see, it's taking over that. I'm going to think, so talking, if you ever are equal or when you communicate this to all, so you just remind them about the. About how these warrants, even if the findings can be brought up. Okay, so there's a thing for that. Let's go back to our agenda. We have legislation two five, one two five, the horse. Do you want to call for a motion? There's no motion, we will not consider it. There's no second, you will not consider the legislation safe. There's a penny. Well, first of all, I don't see the sponsor here. Let's all. Yeah. Well, I don't know if there's a motion second on this legislation as well. It was. Two five one two five. We were waiting for.
And then the chair, the directive to DOJ, which then also affects our original legislation, which would extend to your.
Yeah, and the round one told that a legal review will impact the legislative standpoint or right to thirty eight. Yeah, I'll just want to save the record, first call for delegate during the end of the season. Then call for delegate during the end of the season. I think this is perfect. They also have that to request for it to address this to do a legal review on cap thirty five eighteen. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the agenda, legislation two six four two five. This legislation. So I'm going to do a first call for a motion.
So it will be third.
Second call for a motion. No motion on legislation two six four two five. We are at the interview business.
Can I be taken by my asking?
Because that amendment has been very cool. Thank you, Mesa. Members of the Budget Finance Committee, we're at the end of our new business, we're gonna recognize the motion from Vice Chair Crossley to adjourn. Thank you, Chairman Gazi. Over the committee. We're gonna vote on it, and Doug, you know, to the day, I don't know. Doug, you know, it's a normative, I saw a thumbs up, so I'm gonna acknowledge that. He did vote, I don't know if he voted right. Okay, vote agree? Doug, it's Sharon, how's it? I don't know. Great. All right, and then Chairman, best my credit, I don't know. And then. Tell them last year, I'll give a vote. We have five of us voting affirmative, zero opposed, and I still not voting in motion carries. We are adjourned at twelve forty three PM. And for those listening online, the Budget and Finance Committee has met twice in the month of December, so we will not reconvene until January two thousand twenty six. Have a good holiday and the year.
I hope you have a very Christmas.